And this basically is just showing kind of for a visual effect that you can see that that is basically the boundaries of the city of Morganton. And those two stars in the lower right-hand corner represent where we had two ambulances located. They were primarily responsible for responding to everything in those red boundaries. The next slide just simply shows a rough location of what we did when we moved one of them to the other area. Obviously, if you imagine that, again Sterling and Green writings right down between them, it's going to save a lot of time. Before we actually did this, we actually drove non-emergency traffic. We drove from the hospital to where that second, to where the senior center is, and it was a seven-minute drive, non-emergency traffic, stopping at lights and all that stuff. But still, seven minutes, you figure that may be six minutes emergency traffic, probably not a lot faster than that. So anything on that side, on the northwest side of what is now Station 7, we've cut six minutes off that time. We knew it was going to be significant because the very first day, we were excited to see what the impact was going to be. And the very first day that we opened Station 7, it was early on in June, I believe, there were ten calls in their district. And understand that we had, every station that we had, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, had designated zones drawn out in the county GIS system. So that when we opened Station 7, we had to kind of cut into those zones, make a new response zone for Station 7. Scott Black and IT Department was instrumental in helping us get that up and going. They made that relatively seamless. But when the very first day happened and we wanted to see, how did this ambulance, sitting in this new location, in this new restructured zone, how did they respond? There were ten calls that came in in that 24-hour period. Station 7 was able to respond to nine of those, and the average response time to those nine emergencies turned out to be 6.16 minutes. So I think within 24 hours, we looked at that and said, if they can even get in the ballpark of that on a day-in, day-out, week-in, week-out basis, we're going to cut into the overall picture pretty significantly and obviously in a positive manner. The response times that we were focusing on in 2012, and I think that number up there may be a little off, I think I reported the wrong date at the first time, but the average response time for 2012, and this is to emergencies, this is not to a, take an elderly lady to the doctor's office, or someone stubbed their toe, this is to true emergencies that we're responding, lights and sirens. The average response time for the year of 2012 was 12.11 minutes. We approached all of our staff in in-service, and we basically made them aware of those numbers. And we made them aware that on a national average, that's unacceptable. And again, we understood a lot of the reasoning was because doubling up locations of ambulances in certain spots and leaving other spots unattended to, and pretty significantly, the number of convalescent calls we did. But the first thing we did was raise awareness that we've got to work on those. The first quarter of 2013, from January to March, we were able, really just through awareness, to bring that down to 11.62 minutes. The second quarter, that average response time dropped to 11.02 minutes. It was right at the end of the second quarter, when we opened Station 7 and moved that ambulance, when we started to see immediate impact on the response times. At the end of the third quarter, the average response time was 9.28 minutes. Again, we brought on the convalescent crew September 9th, so they were just underway when that response time. And our numbers, our data for the fourth quarter, which would be with the station moved permanently, excuse me, and the convalescent crew, the non-emergency transport team up and going full-time, our response times are down to 9.14 minutes. Also pulled up today, just for the most recent data, and the overall response time since Station 7 has opened, we knew we weren't going to maintain 6.16. That was just a nice start to get our hopes going. But I believe the response times were just over eight minutes out of Station 7. So even still, however many months we're into, seven months, something like that, they're still pretty significant. And obviously, those response times are cutting down the response times of the other. And as far as the non-emergency transport team, we designated them Transport 1. Again, we actually, years ago, we purchased a Dodge Sprinter that is a very beautiful non-emergency transport truck. It's not really useful for two paramedics working a really bad trauma in the back of it, for room-wise, but it's probably the best riding vehicle we have, and it's certainly perfect for that. So we didn't purchase any ambulance, we just used that, and really, we're kind of happy that we had that ambulance already in our fleet. We also, before we got them up and going September 9th, we had multiple meetings with some of the VIPs of the Blue Ridge Healthcare, to include the president, the CEO, several vice presidents, department heads and all that. And it was kind of, it was a unique thing because they actually called us because they had concerns that they had multiple, multiple incidents where they had people who needed transport out of their facilities, obviously because those transports, if someone's in a bed, it bottlenecked the entire system. You can't get someone from the emergency room up to the ICU, you can't get someone from the waiting room into the emergency room because that one person somewhere on a floor is waiting to go home. And they had concerns that they had reported incidents where it was three, four hours delay. So they actually approached us to talk about a solution long after the county manager and our staff had already met multiple times to solve it from our end. So we had a need to get our response times down and keep our emergency trucks available more often. They had a need because they had a bottleneck in their system. So we spent many meetings with the VIPs down there to try and work this out. One of our concerns was that our non-emergency transport team would be done at, get off at 6:30 and 6 o'clock, eight or 10 transports will come in, and we would have really solved nothing. So they've done a good job. I'm not going to read all those, but as the end of the year, December 31st, just that one truck alone, Monday through Friday, had accomplished 271 missions. As you can see, I broke them down at times, but we're really pleased with their way that they're balanced out over the day. They're being able to accomplish a lot more because they're not getting overwhelmed or overtasked at any one specific time of the day. I pulled up the data today. I believe that as of today, they have accomplished 341 missions. Those balance of times is still holding true, so we're really pleased about that. And that's all I have on my update, but I'd be more than happy to field any questions if you have them.
It's a great update. Any commissioners have any questions? Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment, no question. Greg, I've commended your group and your team before in your absence, and I'd just like to do it again tonight while you're here. I think you've made tremendous strides, and I know it's a team effort, and I appreciate all the work that your guys do.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. I appreciate that, and we will certainly pass that on.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just ask one. What's next? Can we expect lower times down the road, or any improvements, or we've done most of the improvements we think?
Well, and that's a good question, and obviously, the fact that we've shaved whatever it is, three minutes, roughly three minutes off of response times, is astronomical. Making people, the crews, aware that they're responsible for this, and you know, whether that's zipping up your boots faster before you run out to the truck, or your partner running out and starting the ambulance and getting it going while you're grabbing your coat, whatever it is, you know, you can shave seconds here, maybe 20, 30 seconds there. Obviously, the two things that we're talking about tonight made significant impacts. It's going to be hard to find things to make, shave another minute off in the next year. I don't think that's probably feasible. I think we carved into a big chunk in this past 12 months, and I'm really proud of that and the way the staff has responded to that. There are things that we want to work on, we're certainly not done at, we certainly want to break nine minutes. We were, actually, we met, had a management meeting the other day, we want to look into our maintenance program and see what we need to do to improve that, to make sure that when we send an ambulance to someone's emergency, that it arrives, and that it's capable of putting someone in the back and getting to a healthcare facility safely. We're going to look into our, we have been looking into our technology, we're going to continue to work with IT about that. We have what's called Panasonic ToughBooks, they're laptops, but they're durable, they're what we call paramedic-proof, that supposedly we can't break them. But we're probably using them to about 20% of their capability. We can use so much more. We basically eventually want to get to the point where everything we have to do, every report that we want to do, we can do it on the laptop, scan documents into it on the laptop, print it from the laptop, all inside the ambulance, which is going to cut down small things. They seem small, but someone's at a base, and they're doing their report on their computer, and they get a call, it takes about 20 seconds to shut that computer down and respond. That's 20 seconds we're going to try and capture. So a lot smaller details, no big chunks, but we certainly aren't done.
Anyone else? Well, Greg, on behalf of all the commissioners, the board itself, please express our gratitude to your staff, and we certainly do thank you for your leadership since you've been here with us, and kudos for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Move on to our next item. At this time, Rebecca McLeod, Burke County Health Director, and Mary Smith, CTG Regional Consultant, will make a presentation regarding the positive impacts that the Community Transformation Grant initiatives have had in Burke County. Rebecca?
Good evening, thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman, and the board members. This is Mary Smith. Mary comes to us from Rutherford-Pole, McDowell. She is our Regional Community Transformation Grant Consultant. She's the one that I look to, and she looks to me whenever we want to do projects here in the county. This is an annual update to the board, just so that you know the activities that are going on. And with the PowerPoint that we're going to do tonight is just to talk about the Community Transformation Grants' main goal, and that's to find the often-hidden health assets we have within the counties. And once we find those, whether it be in Burke County, or whether it be in one of the other 10 counties, because if you remember, the community, this is a regional project that has five health departments and two health districts. So there's 11 counties that participate in this. And you have to excuse me, I'm still have the cred. But what we want to do is to strengthen, preserve, and expand our health assets so that we can have, enable people to have better, healthier choices. And our health assets that we've actually done here in the county is we've inventoried our farmers markets, our corner stores that, to encourage them to sell healthier food options, bikeable and walkable communities, working with planning. So we just want to give you an idea of that. Back in August of this past year, Burke County hosted a regional meeting with our planners. We actually had people from the COG, we had planners from other counties, we had public health professionals, brought them together, and the Community Transformation Grant staff actually helped us look at all 11 plans that are the master plans of planning that would draw out, what are the healthy aspects of each of those master plans and planning, the comprehensive plans. But we actually, with this meeting, brought people together, and they actually said, you know, we might have something in common. It does make sense that whenever you're looking at planning, and you're looking at your different comprehensive plans, that you include health. That was kind of a novelty idea that sometimes they may not have thought about. And on this green map, we love our maps, we love GIS, one of the things that we did this past summer, we were actually able and fortunate to have an intern, through Lenora Ryan, who identified the food deserts within our county. And the food deserts are the places where in the county that there weren't very many grocery stores, weren't very many corner stores. And taken upon that, she actually went out, after she inventoried them, she went and surveyed the different community stores and said, who would be interested in working with us long-term to provide healthier choices? You may notice if you go in some of the convenience stores that you actually see bananas, apples, water. And she actually has a commitment from at least one or two stores to begin with, because we have to start small, and she was just an intern for a short period of time, to actually say, we will start providing healthier choices, which was really good. The Minute Mart over on, so straight?
Minute Saver.
Minute Saver, over across from Quaker Matto's golf course, made tremendous changes in his merchandise, and did really well. And on this one, you'll see, Mary did a lot with the farmers markets, the farm stands, a lot of promotional activities promote healthier living with fruits and vegetables, ran commercials that ran with Charter and WLOS out of Asheville, but the ones that Charter ran in Burke County. Also put stuff in that paid for, ads with the News Herald and the radio stations. Mary also worked with the farmers markets to talk to them about increasing the availability of EBT, the electronic banking.
Electronic bank transfer.
Transfers, SNAP, with the farmers markets, to see if they had an interest in doing that, so that people who are lower-income families may actually be able to access those farmers markets more. A nod. Another thing that we've also done in this county this past fall, we hosted a local food and local government webinar at the Health Department, and brought in cooperative extension because one of the things that Community Transformation Grants looking at also is food councils, and that is something that's on cooperative extensions agenda also, but trying to, again, bring people together to maximize the resources when we don't have a lot that's out there. One of the other things that's going on, Community Transformation Grant has helped do is provide technical assistance to the partner property management properties, which in January, on January 1st, went smoke-free. Now, the PPM properties are not just here in Burke County, they're across the state. And whenever they decided to become smoke-free, they looked to the state, to the Community Transformation people, and said, hey, what can you provide for us if we have people who are living in our apartments who may want to quit smoking, or quit tobacco? And actually, here in this county, if you look, Rutherford Square in Conley Springs, Village Creek in Morganton, Blue Ridge in Valdez, and High Meadows in Valdez are four complexes that PPM owns that, through Community Transformation, they have actually provided facilitators for people who wanted to quit using tobacco, and have been able to provide that through the Outreach Center and the TLC Counseling and a Caring Alternative. And that's kind of a, oh my goodness, we're going to tell people they can't smoke in their homes, but they're renting. I said, mm, okay. It's been kind of quiet. But what I'd like to do to finish up, because I know you've been here a long time, but I wanted you to understand and hear that we actually are doing things in the county and looking out for our assets, because not any one person or agency can do all this. And Mary, I'm going to let her finish up with just a few words.
Appreciate you all taking the time to hear about the work that we're doing, and really, we're trying through the Community Transformation Grant Project to assess, understand, and use our population health data to really, to inspire and inform community decision-makers. So, you know, we're really trying to tell a story and know what we're talking about when we, when we do talk about the assets that we have in the county and how they can affect health. And we're investing in community-based projects, like a lot of the things that you see here, and we're doing that by assessing assets across the region. And our health assets are things like organizations, policies, initiatives, or infrastructure developments that improve health by increasing access to healthy foods, access to healthy living, tobacco-free spaces, or chronic disease management. We want to prevent it before it happens, that's the real goal. And our goal is to communicate the health assets to our leadership, our key stakeholders, community leaders, and our aim is to help everyone understand the health of the populations that we all serve, and to see where and how we can preserve the assets and expand on them. We reach across sectors in this work. We're trying to bring in new partners because really, everybody, everybody in this room really can do something that can affect and make people, make our community healthier. So everybody has a stake and a role to play in improving health outcomes and preventing chronic disease. And these cross-sector partnerships increase the health and the quality of life for everyone. So we all have a job to do and a lot of work to do. So, thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mary or Rebecca? Well, again, ladies, on behalf of the board, we thank you for your hard work and what you do for the county as far as the health side goes, and I know that's a tough job for you, but we do appreciate it. Please extend our gratitude to your staff, please. Thank you. That concludes our public presentations. Do you gentlemen need to take a break, or should we go on? All right, we have no scheduled public hearings for tonight. We had no one sign up for in-public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to the commission? Okay. That will move us in our, to our consent agenda. County Manager Brian Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, I believe it's 15 items. Number one, clerk acceptance of CDBG progress reports submitted by Western Piedmont Council of Government. Number two, county manager acceptance of contribution from Dick's Sporting Goods. Number three, Community Development Department adoption of addendum to the Burke County Comprehensive Park and Recreation Master Plan through the year 2020 for the 2013-14 North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Partif Grant application. Item four, Community Development Department approval of the basic facts and assurances for the 2013-14 North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Partif Grant application. Item five, Finance Department adoption of an ordinance prescribing procedures for disposing of personal property valued at less than $30,000. Item six, Fire Marshal appointments, reappointments to the Local Firefighters Relief Fund trustees. Item seven, Fire Marshal request for Lake James Fire and Rescue Incorporated to enter into a lease-purchase agreement with United Financial of North Carolina Incorporated. Item eight, Fire Marshal approval of the Fire Insurance District map for Love Lady Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department Incorporated. Item nine, Parks, professional park planning consultant services for revised master plan for the Burke County Parks and Recreation System. Item 10, Tax Office EMS collection reports for November 2013. Item 11, Tax Office Release and Refund Report for November 2013. Item 12, Tax Office Tax Collections Report for November 2013. Item 13, Tax Office 2013 VTS Refund Reports for September, October, and November 2013. Item 14, Tax Office Exemption Request Morganton Baptist Church. And item 15, County Manager General Services Request for Waiver from Section 8 of County Administrative Purchasing Manual. And that concludes your consent items.
Hi, gentlemen, we've heard the 15 items on the consent agenda. Your pleasure on the 15.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve.
A motion by Wayne to approve, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That's unanimous, Mr. Manager. We have one decision item, that would be the BCECC Award of Bid for Microwave Connectivity to Wireless Communications for the Burke County Emergency Communication Centers. That was a mouthful. That will be Candy Strzitski, yes, Strzitski, our Task Manager, MCP.
Another mouthful.
First word, I'll be tangled up.
Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you. This, this request is for approval for sole-source microwave connectivity for the new communication center. I'm sure you're aware of the current microwave radio system is serviced by wireless communication, and in order to stay fully operational as we go live with the new facility, we would like you to approve sole-source this for standardization to wireless. We've received a price from them of $255,449.93 for the new microwave radio equipment, the channel bank, and the installation. If you have been out to the site, you see that we have the tower up, and this is the next step of moving forward with that. And do you have any questions?
Any questions for Candy?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. Candy, how's the training going for the employees that are going to be operating that system?
How's the training going? Currently, we have all but four on staff, and everybody's either in the process of getting certification or cross-training.
When will I be completed?
I don't know that they'll ever truly finish training, but to be-
I hope you get certification at least.
For the certifications, we have another EMDFD class the first week of February. So we do intend to try to have a good 80% of the telecommunicators certified at that point.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Candy Harris, how's this equipment being paid for?
This is grant. This is through the grant that we received for the center.
County will owe nothing on this, correct? It'll be through the 911 grant?
Correct, 911 grant, yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, you've heard Candy, do, what is the pleasure of the board on Candy's presentation?
Mr. Chairman, I move toward the bid for microwave connectivity for the Burke County Emergency Communication Center to wireless communications in accordance with NCGS 143-129E6, and authorize county manager to execute the contract. If needed, subject to review and/or revision by the county attorney.
All right, you've all heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That'll be unanimous. Thank you, Candy.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us into item number 11, is our reports and comments. At this time, I'm going to recognize our county manager for a presentation of the 2013 summary of accomplishments by the Burke County Board of Commissioners and Burke County employees themselves.
Let me just get my computer to work with me. I think this, they're going to show this from the back room, summary of accomplishments. And these gentlemen are not everything that's been done this year. These are what I believe are to be the more significant activities that have been undertaken by the county beyond the regular day-to-day activities. Your first one is economic development. We have a listing here, project name Leviton, 152 new jobs, grant funds received, $500,000 for building reuse. This was expansion of current facility for updating new lines. Also had Contour Foam, 10 jobs, $40,000 grants to help in a building reuse, the expansion of 10 jobs for building reuse and restoration. Next is economic development, small entrepreneurial businesses. Burke Entrepreneurial Business Owners, BIBO, planned and coordinated several meetings during which small businesses, business owners had the opportunity to interact, meet each other, and learn new skills. BIBO is an organization started several years ago and is a partnership amongst several organizations that support small businesses. They also established Carolina Textile District in 2013. Textile value chain started by Burke Development Incorporated in partnership with Opportunity Threads and the Manufacturing Solutions Center. They secured $125,000 NC Rule Center Entrepreneurial Grant, secured another $163,800 Economic Development and Administration Grant, formed partnerships with 10 companies that are helping meet current demands for U.S. textile production. Then on workforce development, RENEW stands for reeducating a new employable workforce. Three RENEW classes were held, with 45 students completing the program. More than 100 students have graduated with a full-time employment success rate of 73%. A total of 14 local industries are now partners interviewing, hiring graduates from RENEW. Move on to construction projects, the HRC Building. During 2013, you completed replacement of the HRC Building chiller system and emergency generator, and there are pictures there of the outside system, then inside controls, and one of the pump motors for that equipment. Next is Construction Parks and Recreation Department, constructed new office space and new HVAC, electrical design for the relocation of Burke County Parks and Recreation Department to the Foothills Higher Education Center there at the Conference Center. Next is the Register of Deeds Office, a relocated Register of Deeds Office to the remodeled space in the former Tax Office Building. And this gives, of course, our Register of Deeds staff a little more room than they had to begin with, and I think it flows a little bit easier for people coming there to utilize that facility and work with the staff. And you have several pictures of the new space. Next was a construction project for the Courthouse HVAC, the HVAC installation. Of course, there was a lot of demolition to take out the old. We found out while we had a lot of problems with the old system, things not being, working as they should have been, there were problems with the- as they should have been, there were problems with the delivery lines and return air system. But you have pictures here of some of the new HVAC units that are placed on top of the building, and they serve specific areas of the building. So if one breaks down, that's, that's not a huge problem. These units are small enough, they should be able to replace them in three to five days, if not sooner, where the original system was one behemoth system. And if it broke, everything was broke. So that puts your courtrooms out of business, your clerk of court out of business, and that 55-bed jail downstairs is out of business, which would have been extremely expensive to try to remedy. And as you're aware, it took about a year in the architectural design of the entire system. So to try and replace that system, if it had broken down before we replaced it, would have been a nightmare. The pictures there also show the trunk line for the ductwork and how that is put together so that it won't break, sag, fall apart, let air escape. And then you also have a picture showing there's insulation inside the ductwork to help make the delivery of cool air or warm air more efficient. Courthouse interior, your interior work, lighting, and ceiling tiles, all this was replaced. You have a before picture of courtroom number two, and you can see the lights that were placed out there. And then you transition over to courtroom number two, the after picture that shows this nice smooth ceiling with the lights that look much different and are much more effective than what was there previously. Construction Projects District Attorney's Office. They've been relocated to the courthouse, the main courthouse, back behind the clerk of courts office. And I have a few pictures there of some of their office space. Next is construction for estates. Renovated office space and relocated the estate section of the clerk of courts office to space formerly used by the Register of Deeds. And I've had many comments, not only from staff, but even attorneys, talking about how the old space was so cramped and crowded, it was difficult for some of these people coming in to settle in estates to get there if they were in a wheelchair or had other devices they were using to help them to walk in and out. Again, this opens it up. It gives estates more room than they had, and I think fits them well for another 15 or 20 years, maybe even longer. Construction Projects FHEC, Western Piedmont Community College. As you know, we appropriated funds for outfit costs to exchange classroom and office space at Western Piedmont Community College to enable greater use of the conference center and improve the county's ability to show and rent the facility. By exchanging this space, we were able to acquire breakout rooms that were right there close by to the main conference center rooms that I believe broadens our appeal to a larger segment of people who would be interested in coming to the conference center. Of course, that also helps us in our, our businesses such as restaurants and hotels. We hope that people will come, a larger segment of people will come and use our conference center and use our restaurants and our hotels. This is also a great example of a collaboration with one of our community partners, that being the community college, to do something that is positive for both of us. The classrooms they received and upfitted as well as providing us with new breakout rooms. We have several pictures there of the different breakout rooms that we've acquired. Let me go on to the slide that talks about construction projects, showing the space exchange was almost even between the two entities. Western Piedmont Community College has 10,049 square feet, and Burke County now has 9,956 square feet. They have a breakdown of the different offices, BDI Conference Center, Parks and Recreation, new training area and total square footage is shown there for you. Next is the construction project Burke County Emergency Communications Center. The board approved contract with the city of Morganton for the purchase of 16.787 acres of real property on Kirksey Drive for the consolidated Public Safety Answering Point project. We have a picture of the groundbreaking there. We held the groundbreaking ceremony August 6th for construction of the new facility there on Kirksey Drive. Construction Projects Burke County Emergency Communications Center approved an addendum to the inter-local agreement for the consolidation of 911 services, establishing the employee transitional agreement for Burke County Emergency Communications Center full-time permanent positions. Excuse me. Developed an inter-local agreement between the county and cities pertaining to future delivery of 911 public safety communication services upon activation of the center, and construction is expected to be completed by the spring of 2014. In your next slide, Emergency Medical Services, established EMS Station Seven that Greg was talking about a moment ago, at the Burke Senior Center, with existing crews to reduce response times for the western and northwestern areas of Morganton. Give you a little bit of background. Prior to Greg's arrival, Joe Blanger was the EMS manager, and he'd come to me and talked to me about these kinds of issues, and talked about the purchase of a building just across the street. Weren't able to move forward to buying the building, but the idea of starting that crew down there did seem very feasible. And of course, we have, and we're seeing the data come back to show that this is a good thing, and it is three, three minutes if you're having a stroke or a heart attack, cutting that time off and getting you a paramedic there can make a tremendous difference in the outcome of that patient. We improved response times, again, by three minutes or more in the final quarter of 2013. Part of that was also the establishment of the non-emergency transport service to handle convalescent transport calls and keep ambulances available for emergency calls. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I also want to share with you some information that I've just recently received from our EMS medical director, Dr. Seth Hawkins, who's informed me that in October, he had taken an examination, a board certification examination, subspecialty. This exam is administered by the American Board of Medical Specialties and the American Board of Emergency Medicine. It's the first time a physician board certification examination for EMS has ever been administered. EMS has been recognized as a discreet physician subspecialty worthy of board certification, and only 195 physicians nationally were granted certification in this first examination cycle. So our Dr. Hawkins has achieved this honor and this certification, as well as being one of three people in the world, apparently, to be selected and designated as a Master Fellow by the International Academy of Wilderness Medicine. So those are two certifications now that our EMS director has that are of great value and benefit to our EMS service and the citizens of Burke County. Emergency Management procured a 155 KW generator through domestic preparedness, Region Eight, to use at critical facilities, shelters, and other events that may require emergency standby power. They also procured and managed over $60,000 in training grant funds to host the Western North Carolina Search and Rescue Exercise. They procured and managed over $36,000 in training grant funds to host advanced swiftwater boat operation training here in Burke County. They also procured and managed over $3,400 and two Community Emergency Response Team CERT grants, and also completed all universal objectives in the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Performance Grant, which generates $35,000 that comes to Burke County. Also completed all optional objectives and generated an additional $14,874.3. If you know, or you may have known, that the state of North Carolina found out they didn't have a fire truck or fire station, and they were going to cancel that district, which would have meant people living in the Smoky Creek Protection District would have gone as unprotected, unserved, and their homeowner's insurance would have gone out of sight. By doing this, we've got them coverage with existing fire departments and worked with the State Fire Marshal's Office to make sure that they are covered, I believe is a 9S Fire Protection District. So that, that means, means a lot to those folks. Triple Community Fire Department agreed to extend their fire service district to take in the portion of Smoky Creek Fire District that will be within six miles of their fire department. Boundary lines of the Chesterfield Fire Insurance District also were approved. Built a shelter to house Homeland Security Vehicles Mobile Command Center RV. General Services opened the Gene H. Huffman Memorial Convenience Center located at 6135 Roney Road in Conley Springs on August 8th, 2013, and the board held a dedication ceremony. Completed replacement of roof membranes on the Burke County Services Building, Morganton Burke Senior Center. Completed the white goods pad, recyclable metal storage pad. That's 123 feet by 123 feet. So we've got plenty of storage room there, and that was also paid for by the white good tax money that we received, so there were no county funds involved in that. Community Development approved agreement between Burke County and Carolina Center LLC related to the conveyance of 141.5 acres of real property known as East Lake Number One. Burke County Community Development was directed to serve as a primary agency for development of a Lake James Loop Trail Master Plan to enhance residents' appreciation of the Lake James region, beauty, and other natural resources. Cooperative Extensions, we sponsored the Youth and Government Day, April 11th, 2013, hosted by North Carolina Cooperative Extension. In Finance, the board approved restructuring bonds to save the county and Burke County school system an estimated $2.5 million in principal and interest payments over the next 13 years. Health Department approved a memorandum of understanding for the Charles George Veterans Affairs Medical Center to share space at the Health Department for Veterans Administration to utilize one exam room and intake office to provide service to local veterans. Human Resources obtained a 300% reduction in workers' compensation incurred expenses for fiscal year 1213 compared to fiscal year 1112. They also, the Safety Committee was created, an employee safety manual, and conducted countywide safety inspections for all Burke County facilities. Wellness Committee organized and directed the first annual Employee Fitness Day event May of 2013, and restarted the Employees Benefit Fair in November 2013 to promote physical activity and healthy living to employees. Conducted countywide employee training, workplace discrimination, harassment, and global harmonization system training. Initiated recruitment, interview, and hiring process for the new Burke County Emergency Communications Center that we were talking about earlier. Information Technology, the IT Department, phone system, email. Consolidated phone trunks and changed primary rate interface PRI providers to save the county $6,000 per year. Upgraded the phone system to the new voice-over-internet protocol system, and also upgraded the county email system. Community Development initiated the year-long process for implementing a new planning and permitting system. This system will join all aspects of community development and permitting across three departments, planning, building services, and environmental health. Information Technology for the Sheriff's Department and Public Safety improved the network connectivity for the sheriff's mobile data terminals, set up secure wireless network, and implemented new in-car camera software. Attained equipment for video probable cause hearings and first appearance hearings. I got word today that our senior resident Superior Court Judge and our chief district court judge have signed the letter to the AOC asking for authorization for us to implement these things. That will be a great time savings for us. Replaced and consolidated all servers used for public safety and 911 applications to a new virtual environment. Obtained mobile data terminals for all deputies and mobile field reporting software to improve efficiency and effectiveness. MFR allows deputies to complete reports in their service areas while continuing to be available for calls for service. Obtained new in-car cameras that automatically download to a server when the deputy pulls them to the sheriff's department parking lot. This eliminates the transfer loss and labor-intensive issues associated with having to remove, replace, and copy compact disc. As for the tax system, the IT Department initiated a two-year process for implementing a new tax system that integrates both with the county's finance package and geographic information system. For commissioners and management staff, provided Microsoft Surface Tablets to commissioners and management staff for implementation of paperless agenda packets. Electronic agenda packets will virtually eliminate staff time and materials used to print and assemble agenda packets. And as you can see tonight, they've also approved, improved the installation of the TV monitors and the commissioners' boardrooms that were completed this week, actually. Parks and Recreation, they solicited a request for quotes for the development of Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Organized and conducted with the help of Blue Ridge Healthcare Sports Medicine Department a volunteer coaches clinic on the awareness of heat-related injuries and concussions. The Recreation Department also implemented a coaches identification badges program for all coaches in our youth basketball leagues, 422 coaches, to identify coaches at games and practices. Badges were prepared and issued by the Parks and Recreation Department staff. The Recreation also coordinated efforts with the Atlantic Coast Conference, ACC, representatives to provide youth football teams the opportunity to attend a football clinic. The Sheriff's Department conducted Citizens Academy lasting 12 weeks and graduating 20 participants. They implemented a voluntary employee physical fitness program. As you remember, we, this board authorized the creation of a new warrant sergeant position. He, along with the occasional assistance of other law enforcement officers, and I asked about this, and what he told me is if he knew that somebody was likely to run, he would call some people to help him, but he was still serving these warrants. Served a total of 2,062 warrants and criminal summons on a total of 1,233 individuals between February 11th, 2013, and December 31st, 2013. Little simple math, he did that in 324 days. Now that includes Saturdays and Sundays, so the actual days he would have been working would be even less than that. But serving 2,062, I think he's made a big dent into the backlog of warrants that we've had building up. Obtained grants of $24,045 for the purchase of 25 tasers and related equipment. Implemented an online gun permit process to allow applicants to apply via the internet. Miscellaneous, this board accepted a gift from Vance and Mary Jo Patterson to display a replica of the Charters of Freedom as exhibited in the National Archives Rotunda in Washington, D.C., on the lawn of the old courthouse in downtown Morganton. The exhibit would display the Declaration of Independence on the left, the Constitution in the center, and Bill of Rights on the right. Board also approved a memorandum of agreement with Reason Incorporated, Reduce Euthanasia and Spay or Neuter, to provide a reduced-cost spay/neuter program to qualified residents in the county using state funds. No county funds are required to operate this program. Board also developed and approved a memorandum of agreement with Burke County Public School System to capture all monies provided to the school system, including in-kind donations, to enable the school system to receive all available state funding. You adopted 48 resolutions, nine proclamations, 18 ordinances, and approved 113 board appointments. The Board of Commissioners and staff also had training hours completed in 2013 for commissioners, 69.30; for the county manager, 14.1; for the attorney, 19.5; and clerk, 61 hours, for a total of 163.9 hours of training. 2013 was a busy year. You have done a whole lot, fellows.
No one wears a tie.
That I think were beneficial to the city.
I don't want to wear a tie. Let's go home and go to bed.
Yeah. Anybody have any comments or questions for the county manager?
Great report. Yeah, Johnny, just whoever did all that work and gathering that data, we need to give a big round of applause, I think, or a big thank you at least.
Well, gentlemen, I'm proud of every one of you. We did have a busy 2013, and a lot of things came in front of us, and we took the time to go over every item that was in front of us, and I think we made great decisions on every item that came in front of us to move Burke County forward, and I think the citizens will certainly appreciate that. Mr. Manager, do you have enough force to go over the vacancy announcements?
I'll try.
That's what you want me to do.
I won't be able to go quite as in-depth, but I'll go over the topic. Hickory Regional Planning Commission. One vacancy exists on this commission for a four-year term beginning July 1st, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2016. The applicant would need to, one, live inside the portion of city of Hickory located in Burke County, or, two, live within the Ikerd Town-
Burke County, or, two, live within the Iker Township approximately one mile from the Hickory City Boundary in Burke County, which is the, in the Hickory ETJ. Meetings are held on the fourth Wednesday of the month at six P.M. at Hickory City Hall. For additional information on this position, contact Cal Overby, Principal Planner, City of Hickory, at eight-two-eight-three-two-three-seven-four-eight-seven, or by his email at C-O-V-E-R-B-Y@hickorync.gov. Next is Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Eight vacancies exist. Initial terms of the appointment are for one year. Training is required and provided by the Western Piedmont Council of Government through the Aging Support Program. Contact Roxanne Powell, the Regional Ombudsman, at eight-two-eight-four-eight-five-four-two-one-three for more information. Next is Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. One vacancy exists. Initial term of appointment are for one year. Training is required and provided by the Western Piedmont Council of Government through the Aging Support Program. Contact Roxanne Powell, Regional Ombudsman, eight-two-eight-four-eight-five-four-two-one-three for more information. Next is Council on Aging. One vacancy exists for an enlarged position. Terms of appointment are for three years. For more information, contact Kathy Pritchard at eight-two-eight-seven-six-four-nine-one-six-one. Next is Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. One vacancy exists on this council for a student under the age of eighteen. The term of appointment is for two years. Contact A.J. Cato at eight-two-eight-four-zero-three-one-four-two-seven for more information. Next is the Board of Equalization and Review. Applications are being accepted for the two thousand and fourteen Board of Equalization and Review, which consists of five regular members and two alternates. Contact the Tax Administrator at seven-six-four-nine-four-three-four for more information on the duties, meeting times, et cetera. Next is the Burke County Planning Board. One vacancy exists for the alternating member, East Township, to complete an unexpired term ending September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Seat will revert to the west when this term is completed. Contact Scott Carpenter, Community Development Director, at eight-two-eight-seven-six-four-nine-zero-three-two for more information. Burke County Zoning Ordinance, Section seventeen oh four dot oh one. Planning Board Membership and Duties is there. Seven members shall be appointed by the Board of Commissioners with appointment and terms of the follow, of the offices as follows. Number one, the planning board members appointed hereunder shall serve respectively for terms of one year for one member, two years for three members, and three years for three members. Subsequent appointments shall be for the terms of three years each. Members can be reappointed to succeed themselves but may not serve more than two consecutive terms. The members of the planning board shall be residents of the county. Three members shall be from the east portion of the county. Three members shall be from the western portion of the county. The seventh member shall alternate between east and west each term. One member from each position must reside in the area zoned by the county. East is Iker Township, Love Lady Township. West is Jonas Ridge Township and Upper Creek Township. Drexel Township, Upper Fork Township, Lower Fork Township, Smoky Creek Township, Lower Creek Township, Linville Township, Silver Creek Township, Quaker Meadows Township, Morganton Township. City of Morganton Board of Adjustment ETJ, one vacancy exists on Morganton's Board of Adjustment. Applicants must reside in extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Morganton. Terms are for three years. For more information, contact Lee Anderson at City of Morganton, eight-two-eight-four-three-eight-five-two-six-zero. City of Morganton Planning Board ETJ, one vacancy exists on the Morganton Planning Board. Applicants must reside in extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Morganton. The term is an unexpired term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. For more information, please contact Lee Anderson, City of Morganton, at eight-two-eight-four-three-eight-five-two-six-zero. And then Partners Behavioral Mental Health Management. One vacancy exists for the Consumer Family Advisory Committee. Family member of a consumer representing mental health. The term is for three years. Please contact Rhett Melton, the Director, at seven oh four-eight-four-two-six-seven-five-one for more information. I believe that concludes the vacancies. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'll now jump back to comments from the board, because I want to let the manager finish up. Totally. I will start on the other side. JR, any comments tonight, sir?
No comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I think we've heard some great reports tonight, and I think we ought to, uh, maybe have Seth come and, uh, one night and, uh, have a plaque. I think he's went way beyond the call of duty and what he's achieved. I think, uh, he, he's a great asset to our EMS, and I think we should honor that, uh, his accomplishments.
Well, I, I totally agree with that. I would, I, and the manager mentioned that he is one of only three people in the world. I was really shocked when I read that in the world that has received this, this award, and I hope that our media got, got note of that, so they'll do that.
Mayor?
Just a friendly reminder, you better stay warm the next three days.
Jeff?
No comments, sir.
And I'm going to get warm. Mr. Chairman, no comment.
All right. Thank, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, I don't believe we have a need for a closed session tonight, so with that being said, I'll declare us in recess until Tuesday, February the fourth, two thousand and fourteen, after the pre-adjourned meeting.